I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As some of you may know, we lost our city administrator, finance officer yesterday. He passed away yesterday afternoon. So we would now like to ask for just a moment of silence in honor of him. Thank you. Because of the passing of Harley yesterday, I'm going to request that we remove the first reading of appropriations ordinance and that the council be available to meet next Monday evening, the 8th, at 7:00 PM to continue discussions on the budget. Please let me know if that's not convenient. We'll probably meet this evening. That's all right. We'll move on to approving the minutes from the August 18 regular meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion carried. I'm going, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We approve the agenda?
The agenda.
Do we need to vote on that since I changed it? Okay. So I did out of order, we're okay with the minutes, and went back to the agenda. All those in favor of the change to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thanks Debbie. We'll move to the claims now. The bills between $148,115.40.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Current claims, $206,922.62.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on the current claims?
Yeah, I've got a few questions.
Okay.
I noticed $2,464.40 in legal fees on Boulder Falls. So we're still in the middle of that.
Yes, we are.
Next to Henderson, Palmer, and Nelson.
That's correct.
And then I wondered what Black Hills Technology on page five midway down, $4,210 monthly fees, Probes, 400 PCS, Probo laptop. Where did all of that go?
That is our technology company that supports all the computers for everybody that is a city employee.
The departments. It's the library.
Library, I think was the main.
The water.
User recently.
And the sewer, he's part of it. It's a monthly maintenance fee. If we have any problems, that what they come and go at is in the fee already.
Okay.
And then the computers, the four were for the office. Hard drives, we're getting two full, make it bigger. Hard drives. Laptop is for Cindy. And then we had malware. We did some antivirus malware on some computers.
One last question on page 13. Pine Valley Echo products, mold and mildew removal. Where would that at?
What is that Evan's plunge? Theodore's here, he could probably answer.
That was ordered under the previous management. We haven't used it. It's been unused. I'm getting it returned.
Okay. Thank you.
And actually Debbie, I didn't recognize Theodore's being present. So I'll catch him. Any other discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I'll move to communications from the public. And we have Courtney and Aaron. I see in the back row there that would like to share their trip to London with the council.
Well, good evening. My name is Erin Neiger, and this is Courtney Nas. We are two of your local cheerleaders from Hot Springs here. And this summer, we had camp in July where we went through UCA, which is Universal Cheerleading Association. So they taught us routines where we had a cheer and a dance. Our whole team tried out for it, and we were the two that made it. And so it is a program where they take any local cheerleader to try out. And what we do is we go on a London trip, and we tour the place all around Windsor. We get to see all the famous places. Along with that, we have to learn new routines and cheer in their local London Day Parade. And so that's what we're doing, and we're representing the town of Hot Springs.
And so we're here to address you guys, to ask the council if, if there's any way that you guys would be able to donate funds. However, if you aren't able to, we totally understand. We're very sorry for your loss. And we just want to also tell you guys that we'll be representing the town of Hot Springs. And then there's also three other cheerleaders from the country that are going. So our local area is also being represented with us as well. So we just want to tell you guys that we're going to be representing the town of Hot Springs in London.
So you're requesting money for expenses?
Yep.
And they're not covering your trip?
Uh, no.
Is there, is there a primary amount that you're looking for?
The total, the total cost for the trip and airplane tickets is $3,505 a person. We're definitely not, of course, asking for that amount. And then on top of that, they recommend that we have $100 per day for spending. We have to pay for one meal a day, and then any drinks to go with our meals that they provide.
And we'll be there for six days.
That'd be about $400. And who's paying the 35%?
My parents are donors. They pay what they can. They pay our first payment, which was 800. And then right now, we're working on fundraising. Lots of different local businesses have donated something that we can raffle off. And we'll be starting that raffle here soon to get all of those prizes composed together. And then we've also gotten money donations from local businesses as well. We're also working with Jay's Salon to set up a day, or actually through some days, where he's going to cut senior citizens' hair and children's hair for a discounted rate, and then all of those funds will go to us. And then we're also working with Help for Life. They're going to do like Zoom with Don Spreis for two nights. And then those funds will also go to us. So we're working with the community. That way, they're helping us get there as well.
And when is the trip going to be?
December 26 is when we fly out to London.
It was a very short notice of when we found out we could go, so.
Well, I think it's a, they're representing the city of Hot Springs. I think it's a good thing to donate to them. If they can get the money together for the airfare and tickets and all that. If they don't, what can the city do? That's a total of $4700. $4105 for each one. I propose that after they have all of their city activities, and, did you say raffles?
Yep, we're doing the raffle.
And all, all that, if they, if they need money, I think the city should make up the difference between whatever they, they collect and it helps their parents.
When will the raffles be completed?
We're starting, we're looking to start the first raffle on September 12, which is the first home football game, which is also the homecoming game. So we're hoping to get lots of people to get the raffles there. And businesses have been donating gift cards like or gift certificates so far. Evan's plunge did two free family admissions, and the golf course did free golfing, and both different things like that that we're raffling off.
Hoping to end it in one or two weeks if we can sell enough.
Should we ask them to come back at first meeting in October?
I think that would be a good idea. Can you report back to us on all your donations and all your raffles?
Yep.
And I hope to be a football game. They're going to be selling tickets there, I take it?
Yes, we hope so.
Okay. Come back first meeting in October, and we'll see where you're at.
Okay.
And we'll see what we can do.
Is that going to give you enough time, girls? That's just a month.
Yeah, that should be fine.
That should give us enough time.
Because if not, we could actually wait till the second meeting in October if you wanted to. If that give you a little more time to build more.
Oh, we have plenty of time. We can come back for first meeting if that's time.
You can always move it out.
Well, if they're not leaving until December, they could actually go to the first meeting in November. Right, and see where you're at, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, because until we get our budget figured out, we can't really, we can't guarantee anything at this point.
Right, we are kind of in a.
Stating the facts.
Holding pattern. Well, we'll put them on the agenda for October, first meeting in October. I don't know the date off the top of my head. And if that doesn't work, we'll just move you out till November. All right, thank you for coming and sharing with us. Are there any other publications from, or communications from the public?
I would have one if it's appropriate. My name's Dan Driscoll. I'm with the US Geological Survey in Rapid City. First, I was very sad, and this morning to get the news about Harley, I'm sure it's a tremendous loss for your community. And really Harley's the reason I'm here tonight. Those of you on the Public Works Committee will remember a couple of months ago, I talked with you about a project, you know, requesting involvement to develop a groundwater flow model for the Madison and Minnalausa aquifers for the Black Hills area, kind of a regional scale effort. And our hope was that we would get participation from the various counties and a couple of the larger communities, pool the local funds, and then seek dollar-for-dollar match from the state water plan, basically administered by Department of Environment and Natural Resources. And, you know, late last week, Harley had called me and informed me that there'd been a budget item in your budget, and that as you got down to trying to balance it, that that item fell out. And he had encouraged me to come down and, and ask if he might consider, you know, a smaller, you know, a partial funding increment. And so I just came to put that request on the table. It sounds like you're, if I understand correctly, you're probably going to defer your formal budget action for another week. Is that correct?
Monday.
Yeah, we'll discuss budget again Monday night, 7 o'clock at City Hall.
And I guess I figured I'd throw it on the table while I'm here tonight. Would there be a reason for me to be here next Monday, or taking the request at this time? Would that suffice?
It will be a public meeting. You're welcome to join. I would like the council to revisit that one, given the heavy usage of different organizations of our waters in this area. I do think it's important that we understand how that will affect the water flows in our area. So I do hope that we, I will definitely bring it up on Monday night. I do hope that they think about all the importance, given the activities that are, the corporations that are wanting to do with our water in this area.
Sure. One, one other factor, I know that the Fall River Commission does have a funding amount in their budget, according to their auditor, Sue Ganji, and I think that was a $1,000 item, which to me is an important gesture of support. And we hoped perhaps there might be an arrangement where the, you know, the city and county, you know, might do a mutual, you know, collaboration on something like that. I expect I would know more, you know, by Friday of this week. Is there, now that Harley's gone, a particular person I might be in contact with and let you know how that comes out?
That'll be me for the short term, or maybe longer.
Well, you'll be available through the number at City Hall then, so I'll.
Yes, the funeral is on Friday, so I will be in Rapid for a part of that day. But I can give you my cell phone number, and I'd welcome a call from you if you can help us out with initial information.
Public info.
Well, it is public info, but it's a rough week, so I'll take advantage of that opportunity to write it down.
Really feel for your situation. Thanks so much for your night.
Thank you. Were there any other communications from the public?
I'm just curious, is the lady going to be put back on top of the gazebo?
Yes, she is. I was actually going to do an article in the paper about that, but we will be talking about other things in the paper next week. So by the end of the month, you, by, I'm sorry, in a couple of weeks at the most, you'll know. But we're planning a ceremony on the 25th of September. Thanks for asking. Any other communications from the public? Any questions on the personnel items from the council? So we can move forward and then come back to the hearing, correct? We have a second reading of ordinance 1144, Amendment 627-8, front rear setback requirements in a mixed-use district. Scott spoke to the council about this a couple of weeks ago. So I guess I need to know if we want to move forward here.
Motion to approve. Second.
On the second reading of the ordinance? Are there any public comments on ordinance 1144, front rear setback requirements for mixed-use districts? No, appreciate that. Any additional discussion? I got a second, didn't I?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We have a second reading of ordinance 1147, rezoning Indianapolis Avenue, Highway 18 bypass between, is this correct, 16th and 19th, or was it 6th? Still 16th and 19th, do you have?
No.
It is, it's 6th, that's what I thought. This was incorrect. Okay, we, we have carried forward the typo, but it is between South 6th Street and South 9th Street. Any discussion from the public? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We have a second reading of ordinance 1148, rezoning Minicata Avenue, Spring Avenue, up to Spring Avenue, and Villa Teresa.
Second.
Any discussion from the public on that? Council? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
That's same.
Thank you. Motion carried. In your packets, I believe we have the first reading, I'm sorry, the second reading ordinance 1142, revised chapter three of alcoholic beverages.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We're tabling the first reading of the appropriations. New business, temporary alcoholic beverage license for Winter Circle on September 13 at the Mueller Center for a wedding.
Make motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Hot Springs Vault on September 26 at the Mueller Center for the Badger Clark event.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Fall River County accepted the low bid from MG Oil Company for number two diet unleaded gasoline for $3.2971 per gallon. Just a statement? Okay. Fall River County accepted the low bid from Nelson's Oil and Gas for 8,000 gallons of number two diet diesel at $3.35 per gallon. We have a travel request from the director of Evan's Plunge, instructor trained in Denver, and I forget the dates, Theodore.
Second week in November.
Second week in November.
And I would like two people to go up there.
You have $100, what else?
We, the training was 400 and something.
Oh, yeah, for the instructor class, it would be 400 for like staying up there. I don't know.
Probably.
After lifeguard training?
Oh, to get instructor license to train lifeguard, so we don't have to bring people in to train, which is going to save a lot of money.
So and there was a presentation by Theodore to Scott for safety, as a safety, employee safety person, to Harley, myself. Georgia was not available. To where it showed that it would actually be overall less to have in-house instructor training as opposed to sending people, you know, several of them in the spring, especially to Rapid City to be trained. So go ahead.
Are these full-time employees or sending down, or somebody that might quit in six or seven weeks or months?
Uh, me, myself, and my head lifeguard that I would like to go up there.
So we're.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion?
Can you get back to us and let us know what the other costs are going to be?
Do you, okay.
Hotel and.
Assume you're planning to drive?
Yes. So gasoline and motel, and then the overall cost of the class?
And that's 400 per person?
Yes, sir.
Do you want him to come back with the final number before we move forward, or do we want to?
No, I think you can just, uh, let us know.
Okay.
When is the class?
Uh, second week in November.
So do we, we want to vote on travel approval? So all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I think it's a good decision. Heavy truck traffic on city streets was added to the new business. Is there someone who wants to speak to that item, or?
I know.
Who requests it?
I didn't put it down.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Harley just asked.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll cover for Harley under the circumstances.
I did talk to Harley about having a discussion with the council about putting load limits on city streets, so that we don't know where this truck came from. It might have come from Custer, but it's going.
It's going down a state highway.
If anyone's interested, I have a picture here of the truck. It has probably.
22 tires on each side on the road.
But what you don't understand, he can legally carry on, if you posted down Road 7 ton axle, he can still go down that road.
I understand.
He can go down the state road.
No, he can go down any road posted seven ton legally because he has enough axles to carry the weight. What you do when you post these roads like seven tons, you hurt the local people. You don't hurt companies like that. They, they have enough axles to carry the weight legally on any, any posted road in America. When you, when you try to post these tonnies, you hurt local deliveries and local ranchers and farmers and people like that. The council just went down that road, and they just, they rescinded their action following the meeting.
Who did?
The county.
The county. But I thought there should be some discussion, since somebody from the public turned this in.
Like I said, that, that picture is taken of a truck going on a state highway. That truck can legally go down that highway every day, all day long.
I understand that.
With no, so I don't, I don't understand what they're thinking.
Well, that's, when you got a truck that size coming through town.
You may even see a truck that size going on our side streets.
Well, I just saw a double side dump go down Fifth Street from up at the VA, down towards the highway.
He's probably working on Fourth Street.
I think they're looking up to VA.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have, they don't have a double, they have a side dump, and they're actually hauling material.
To the VA or to?
No, on the. Probably hired on Fourth Street.
But there was a double one that came out of VA.
How would you have got, turn around or?
I have no idea. Well, you can go all the way around the building.
Well, there's definitely been other people that brought that to my attention, the concern about heavy truck traffic on, you know, 385 through town. It is a state road. There are state laws, the government will load limits. We cannot change those really without changing state law. But we can, you know, definitely talk to Hills Material, take your time to do, to see if they can, you know, do anything to help be a good neighbor.
The bad thing is coming around that corner by the post office. And the old library, what it used to be. They stop traffic coming around that corner. It's, it's just hard for them to get around that corner. I've watched them over and over and over again.
It's still a state highway.
Yeah, unfortunately. But I just thought, you know, since this was turned in by somebody in the public, we should have a discussion with them.
I'm just curious, so I was unable to go, so I apologize for that. But those DOT meetings, weren't they talking about changing the way the highway was?
Yes.
Was that decided? Was that decided?
We've never met back with them.
I was told that they, a representative from DOT would come to Hot Springs and bring me up to speed on options, and that has not happened yet. And I was actually on my list of things to do today, call, but that today just, my list didn't happen. So it is definitely something that I want to look into as well. But we do have state laws that allow the trucks on 385 through town. So I'll. So, I'll just check into our options, if we have any. Are there any other comments from the public? Or council? One of the things that I believe Harley also put on, I'm sorry, yes?
Cindy, I just wanna make one comment, and it, it seems like over the years, Hill's Material has caught a lot of plaque with the truck traffic, and I guess I'd kinda like to remind people that, you know, it's well and good to say we need to attract industries to town, but when we have an industry, we think of ways to kinda minimize their operations and to make things a little harder for them. There are a lot of people that work out of Hill's Material that live in town and shop in town. I kinda think maybe we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna have a conversation with them and see, you know, if there's something we can do differently. We definitely don't want to discourage business. This 7:30 permit on review? Thank you. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:30, it's 7:30, um, on the radio tower posted 309 Canton. Bill Martin, would you like to speak, please?
I'd like to say too, that I was very sorry for when I heard this morning Harley passed away. Harley and I had done some research online about radiation patterns, and where would be the best spot to locate, um, this tower. We came up with what we thought might be some other good places, and that just didn't wind up being so. Anyway, uh, the letter here is the letter that was sent out to my neighbors, and you can see Harley had the notice at the bottom here. And I did, I did appreciate his, helping me some on this, but, uh, you know, we, we sought permission from the FCC for construction of low-power radio, uh, at the radio station, and, uh, we almost missed the deadline. Had that not been a gun shutdown, we would've. We were, uh, they opened up that window for another two weeks, and I think providentially we got in there. We think that this would be a positive step forward, not just for our church, but for our community, because we could use this as an information station, you know, letting people coming into the area know what's going on in the area. It would be a nonprofit radio station, so we would need, uh, people to sponsor, uh, you know, certain hours on the station. We would also be looking for some volunteers to maybe help broadcast and local sports events and things like that, you know, that's all, all gonna depend upon the number of volunteers that we get. Now, what we're looking at is a low-profile tower. It's only a 25, uh, Rome 25 tower, you see that on the second page there, approximately 12 inches across, uh, thirty, uh, almost 33 feet high. Uh, it would be in concrete, we're looking at approximately 5.3 cubic yards of concrete with rebar. You see a little diagram there at the bottom showing that. And the station colors we've already got, KJFT, um, and we like to locate this on the hill behind the church, and so, uh, we're, we're willing to work with the city on this, and we want to, you know, but you want it colored pink, we'll color it pink. You want it blue or green or tan or whatever, we will not have any lights on it, and the antenna is not much larger than a, what you would say a medium-sized TV antenna, and there used to be those things all over town, and so, uh, this is what we're asking.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the, the public that would like to come in? Yes, sir.
My name is Lon Sharp. Uh, we live immediately adjoining the, the property where the Martins live. We own, uh, more than a half a block contiguous. Um, I wanted to remind the council that, uh, three or four years ago, Mr. Martin brought forth a proposition for a tower that was denied by the council on that hill. At that time, it was to be a cross, I believe. Um, and at that time, I surveyed our neighborhood, and it was pretty clear that it was, uh, a strong opinion that it was a detriment to have that on our view shed. We are residential A, that is the kind of property that we bought into. Uh, it's a pristine cul-de-sac or dead-end kind of a neighborhood. Um, this is, tower would be immediately on the, uh, the sunset or west view of our property and other neighbors that, that purchased nearby, and, and others that have, that've lived there long-term, much longer than, than when the Martins lived there. This is a commercial application, and I believe that, uh, in accordance with, uh, the, the concept of zoning is that commercial applications should be in commercial zones. This is, this is a strictly residential area, and I encourage the council to maintain that, please.
And I'd also remind the council that, you know, we're talking about church. We're talking about religious broadcast, talking about freedom of speech. Uh, this is something that can help our community. It is low-profile. It is low-profile, and if you look adjacent to this, I've got signatures of 54, you know, residents of Hot Springs that say they'd like to see this expedited so that we can move forward on it. We have a timetable to look at.
I believe I saw all these two-hand hands back there. Sir, you?
My name is Brian Daunt, and, uh, we live on, uh, Fourth Street, and we're also adjacent to the property, and, uh, while we don't object to the concept, uh, we have some concerns also about putting it in a residential neighborhood, and not so much from the view shed standpoint, but from the transmission interference standpoint. It's pretty clear from the information we saw on the FCC website that transmission interference can be expected within 400 feet of this tower, uh, to any kind of electronic devices, uh, any kind of interference to cell phones, cordless phones, scanners, um, wireless internet, um, can be expected, and there's at least 12 residences within four, within that 400-foot circle. That, I guess that's our, our main concern. In addition, under current FCC regulations, there is no recourse for addressing that for mobile devices within, within that zone.
So, basically, what you're saying, if I was a ham radio operator, I could put up a 100-foot tower and there's nothing to say you can do about it, basically?
I don't know about ham radio operations, I, I...
No, I believe if I was a private ham radio operator, I could put up a tower just about anywhere.
You can go 500,000 watts.
Yeah.
This is, this is just 100 watts. It's low-power at then, that's the way.
Thirty, thirty, thirty-three foot towers.
Yeah.
Everly, do you know his name?
Brian. I didn't get his last name, though.
Daunt, D-A-U-N-T.
Thank you, Brian.
Barb?
Barb Sharp, and my husband Lon just spoke. Um, I would just like to address the additional information that was just given. As far as, uh, the possibility of a ham radio, um, operator being able to construct a tower, if that's in fact the case, that's still irrelevant because this is not a ham radio tower. This is not against free speech, absolutely not against free speech. The only issue here is, uh, the logistics and the, um, commercial nature of the tower. And it also is not a popularity contest. It doesn't matter how many people sign the petition, it's a matter of legal recourse, not legal recourse, but legal requirement and the nature of the request, so I'm against it.
Did anybody talk to Scott? See if this was against the ordinance to put up? That's why it's a use on review apparently.
Yeah, Scott said, you know, I could, you know, I could put up a ham tower there. I could put up a 50-foot ham tower in there, no problem. I could put a day-long acre antenna, uh, no problem. But if I'm broadcast, even though it's only 100 watts, and an antenna is no more bigger than a, you know, TV antenna, that, I gotta go through use of review, and so that's why I'm here.
I had a ham radio operator right across the street from me, all kinds of antenna in his house.
Can I hear you?
Yeah. I had a ham radio operator across the street from me on Fifth Street. I lived at 209 South Fifth. Mr. Smith passed away about five years ago, and the tower is still there, and so are a lot of his other antennas. Uh, and the one in the back of his house exceeds the height of this one, um, by a bunch. I think it's like 60 foot tall, and he had some kind of apparatus on it to move it up higher if he needed to. I just have, uh, question, was there any requirement to, uh, have your neighbors, uh, notified?
Oh, yes.
Being around?
Sure, that's, that's the letter that went out. We had certified, the letter went to all our neighbors.
Did you get any written responses?
I did not.
Thank you.
The gentleman in the back row raised his hand first, so you're next.
Oh, my name is Dick Brent. I own property within the 208. The bus was bought as a residence, not commercial, when you bought it, right?
It is residential, you know, there were folks that said I tried to zone it commercial, but I did not.
Yeah, that's cut and dry.
But churches, churches are in residential, and they're residential churches that do have low-power up in radio stations.
But, uh, been there. My wife bought the house in 1955, and we've been there a long time, and I, I don't really think it's right, but it's up to you. It's gonna be how tall, 110 feet?
No, no, 33 feet.
I thought it says 33 meters.
Well, I know.
That's a difference.
Ten, ten, 10 meters.
What?
10 meters, 33 feet.
In the letter, it says 33 meters. The letter I got.
On top of a hill. I have a letter here.
Good. Read it.
Says 33 feet, 10 meters.
That's 110 feet, isn't it?
It says 10 meters.
10 meters.
Parenthesis, 33 feet.
I should've brought my letter.
Well, it's, it should be the same letter.
We got a copy of it right here.
I gave everyone a copy.
It says 33 feet?
Yes, sir. That's what it says in the last sentence of the letter.
And Bill, that's correct, it's 33 feet.
That's correct.
Okay, I must admit, okay.
It says a 100 watt.
33 feet, that's on top of the hill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Really, I'm not in favor of it.
And some of those signatures are from my neighbors.
Yeah, that was my mistake. But not in favor of it, anyway.
Okay, the gentleman in the second row here, did you get his name, David?
My name is Darren Belzkus, and I live at 209 Canton, at the very end of the road. Uh, I bought the residence last October, and, uh, one of the primary reasons I, I moved there, um, because it had a, uh, more of a natural feel. I wasn't looking to live out of town, but I think it has a lot of benefits of living outside of town, but right in town, and I don't wanna go back and forth with how tall it's gonna be. I mean, 33 feet is 33 feet on the top of a hill. I'm gonna be able to see it, and I'm, I'm definitely against it, um, but not because of free speech or any of that, and I'm more concerned with property value. If I ever wanted to sell my home in the future, um, or anything like that, I think that would be a detriment to me owning a home there, so that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Thank you.
Bill, thank you.
I just see in our, our world, you're gonna see more towers, you're not gonna see less. I just, I don't have a problem, but I guess if you're looking for someone to make a motion to do this, I'd make a motion, because I, to me, I think you're gonna see a lot of towers in the future.
If you're making the motion, I'm gonna second the motion that we accepted. Uh, but with that property across the street from my house, deserted for six years, and all those towers, it didn't bother the price on my house when I sold it.
Yes.
Some, have we looked at additional places to put it, say where there's already a tower in place?
Yes, we actually...
As opposed to in the residential area?
Yeah, I spent some time with Harley, and we looked at other options. There, there looked to be some good options. One was up by the water tower, but, uh, Don Olsedson informed me that there's no wire line up there that I could use to remote it there. In addition to that, there are high-voltage power lines which, uh, just destroy your radiation pattern, so you're not sure you'd be able to cover certain parts of town. Uh, there's another place over here at the end of University up the hill, belongs to Don Fish. He is not interested in any kind of a lease. He's got other future things, uh, possibly planned for that. Uh, you know, looked at a place that Paul Navolts has up there beneath the tower. Uh, at that height, the FCC drops the power from 100 watts to 3 watts, and you can't cover all the town. Uh, looked at a place up on the hill here that belongs to, uh, another fellow, and a new house, and, uh, they dropped my power to 11 watts, I can't, I can't get the north end of town. And so, we're kinda in a bold here, and where we are, it's just a good radiation pattern right there on that hill. No lights. No lights on the tower.
Barb?
Yeah, I would just like to add that, um, the fact that there might be more towers in the future around the city is irrelevant to this issue, and I would also like to add that, um, it's an aesthetic decision. The fact that the community who lives there prefers to have a pristine environment, and some council members may not have the same aesthetic viewpoint, but I would hope that they would take into consideration the viewpoint of the people who live there. That's why we're here, and that's why this hearing, um, we're just looking for the opinion of the people who live there. Thank you.
I believe I had a motion in a second. All in favor of allowing the tower?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. What'd you say?
I'm, I'm...
Looking for the, the eyes first.
The eyes?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand. I believe that that's on, correct?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Propane pre-buy, I believe Harley added this to the list.
I think so, yes.
Um, we were looking to buy propane while the price is lower, and, um, I am not personally aware of the process, maybe Wes, you can help me with how we move forward with this.
Harley, Harley told me last week he got three proposals, the lowest one, TJ's. He, he showed me how much was, but I figured how much wasn't. He has it on, on his desk, I think the proposal...
Yeah, we, we aren't going to go through his desk, just so you know.
I'm just saying, I'm curious, did he put it to be at my gallon, or he just called and said, oh, three by five?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, I did. I think he's gonna pick me back up and count it. He said he could do that.
We're, we're gonna try to do that. Um...
I may, I may come up with a way to tell him that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, um, committee reports, Mr. Ashley.
Uh, we did not have a meeting, and we will be having a meeting on, um, third Wednesday of month. We did not have a meeting and we will be having a meeting on the third Wednesday of the month at two P M. City Hall.
Okay, thank you. And did you want to say anything about the personnel policy? We, prior to Harley's passing, we had planned to go through the personnel policy tomorrow evening, but right now that's on hold. And you'll let us know when we plan to, will you do that? Okay. Public works, Mr. Winnian.
Quite a few items. The water fill station came back up again. And we looked at trading some property across from Nelson's Oil and Gas for the Walker property by the bypass and that's a no-go. Right now, I think the consensus is to put on the Walker property on the bypass. It's zoned right, we got a way for traffic to get off the bypass, loop in and get back on the bypass without any major investment on the city part. That's what we're looking at now, it's definitely not decided yet. The painting of the crosswalks and the sidewalk grinding company is coming through town. And he, that guy that drives the sidewalks called me the other day, wondering if we wanted more work done. And of course, I told him he had a bubble heart, like, so I don't know, we might need to talk about that some. But he's going to be in town the next couple of weeks. If we need some areas ground, he's willing to do it.
This is just for crosswalks?
No, this is for the grinding, the mismatches on the sidewalks.
Oh.
Like on the freon trail stuff or wheelchairs don't hit the mismatches and stuff.
That would babble?
Babble it down so it's easy for handicap people and women, it's tripping hazards. And last time, we actually did some of the businesses sidewalks too, and I know some people didn't like that, but I think it was a positive factor at the time.
My theory is go instead of doing that, while we fix them, instead of keep grinding and grinding, while we just go ahead and fix the sidewalks.
I think most of the ones they ground are still good. I think these are all the new ones.
But I'm saying, instead of investing money and grind more, I mean, why don't, why don't we just fix, do it right?
What it cost to grind them last time, Dwight?
Uh, I think around five grand.
Yeah, it's five to six thousand, is the letter I...
And we got all the freon trail done and a lot of the business sidewalks.
Oh, they do that. They just grind down the concrete. Where you see rock instead of just a smooth surface on the concrete, that's where they ground it down on, on River Street anyway. And we actually did that in front of City Hall, you can see that on the north side of the pink pavement in front of City Hall.
Overdyed one section of concrete will separate from the other and then you get a lip, which is a tripping hazard. And they come and they grind back about ten inches depending on how big the lip is and just babble it down so it's no longer tripping.
Can anything be done about driveways? You know, I live on Menacata and, you know, the wheelchairs, if they're going up and down there, they can, the wheelchairs, and they follow.
On the driveways?
Off to the driveways and they go down and then back up.
Oh, like a pan? I don't know. He, he wanted me to follow back and I was...
Do we have specific locations in mind for him?
No, we have, and that's something that City crews and...
Can we maybe throw that out and we'll probably raise it up as well and put it on the next agenda?
Sure.
He's going to be here for a couple of weeks, you said?
Yeah, he's going to be around the hills here for, he goes all over Black Hills grinding. There was some talk of some local contractors wanting to bid this hill too, so, but to go through the bid process takes a lot longer.
Cory and me, Quinn both jumped on me last time we hired somebody from town, but it said they have a grinder, they could do it at the same time. I don't know.
Well, let's decide what we need to have done and then, you know...
I'm not sure, there's a lot of areas, we, we hit it pretty hard last time, but there might be a few areas that need it.
So maybe the council can help with that, look around town.
They don't need it on my sidewalk.
You don't have one.
No, I put a brand new one in.
And then we can talk to streets.
The department heads might be able to help you some there too to see if they don't, all the Billy and all the department heads, they don't see any.
I'll, I'll talk to my department, I mean...
They're right to snowplow along.
I talked to meter readers, she should know where every tripping thing in town is.
Moving along Fourth Street, pressure checking, we got some residents, they've got less pressure now. So we was going to have Cory go double check that all the valves are fully open. There shouldn't be any reason for less pressure and all that, but I think that was, you know something.
When I run my bath, you know, the toilet gets flushed, the water almost stops in the bathtub. So something's wrong somewhere.
Debbie, quit doing that.
But anyway, they were checking into that. Nineteenth Progress Street, they were going to track and Tracy made it completely finished for it before moving on to Nineteenth. That was the plan there.
Is there a timeline when they're supposed to be done with this project?
That I can't tell you off the top of my head, I believe there was.
Well, if it separated or since they've been together, if it was a timeline for the two or...
I'm kind of concerned how they done that dirt on the hillside up there. That's all, it's just going to keep washing down, they put too much dirt back in there. Or they, or maybe they're planning on hydroseeding, I don't know.
Put some blankets in there.
Well, yeah, I don't know, maybe they're planning on shaping it.
The blanket thing as well.
They need to either hydroseed it or put some blankets or something.
Has it washed in the street ever done a rain?
Never.
Sure, it's a little bit.
Talked about parking by the RV dump station out here. We need to put up some no parking signs along the dump station route. And so the campers can get in their dump and they, we did add some spots across the street over here. So we're going to take four or five spots out, making no parking at any time.
Scott and Billy and I have a meeting tomorrow on that.
Okay. Let's see, bid updates, the eleventh of September, the trickle filter at the sewer plant will be coming in for bid. The spin doctor for the valves should be in soon, was what I was told. And the new pressure reducing valves are being shipped as of August twenty-sixth, that day is what Tracy told me.
Yay.
When, when Dwight mentioned the dumping station, that kind of prompted something else. When did the city OK RV parking over at Centennial Park?
They never did.
Why are there campers over there that are plugged into the electric?
I asked that question last week and it's supposed to have been asked before.
What'd we, what'd we find out? Because there was one over there just Saturday.
The electricity's supposed to be shut off for one thing, I was told last week.
He was plugged into a socket?
I know.
There was an article in RV Magazine or Trailer Line or something that it named three or four places where campers could park overnight. Just overnight, no overcuts or anything like that.
Was Centennial Park, Centennial Park one of them?
Centennial Park was one of them.
I see, 'cause I remember about three years ago, we discussed this and the council agreed it was okay for them to park overnight.
It's a really good article.
Just not plug in. As long as they didn't stay more than night. I got a news flash, they're plugging in.
Yeah, that is something we definitely need to look into.
Power should be off, I mean, it's not.
I think we can put it...
They're plugging in and they're hooking up. I don't blame, I don't blame, I'll probably live in down there.
I think it's, I talk too much tonight, I'll still try. She's being quiet. Thank you.
Street lighting agreement is going out for bids. We talked about somebody needing a sewer extension. About it.
Anything we need to take action on or...
I guess not.
Ms. Valerie?
I don't know if, you said you didn't know when they were going to Nineteenth Street? My only reason for asking is from all the rains, it's up, up where they've dug out, up against the pea gutters? It's kind of washed out where you can't hardly, you know right where I'm talking there? The gravel's all washed out, so you can't hardly get up over the concrete, I was just curious when they...
I think next week they should be up there.
Okay.
They're mopping up for it now.
Yeah.
Everything's in on fourth.
Phil's is supposed to be on fourth next week, putting black top down.
Thank you.
And I can find out for sure for him.
Thanks, Dwight. Nothing on code. Parks Recreation and Renovation, Wes?
We haven't had a meeting, we'll have a meeting here in about two weeks or about a week, next week, uh, next Wednesday.
That'll be the Wednesday before the next city council meeting, so that's...
Next Wednesday, Street, City Hall.
Thank you, I believe, that's the ten. Wes, for the, the playground equipment at Brookside, have we made a decision on what we want to order there?
We got to go down, we have to measure it and make sure that stuff that we were looking at would basically fit there. I've been talking to the guy from Omaha.
Okay.
And he sent proposals and I told him, I said, I need to run that and measure it and make sure it will fit in the area. And once we figure that out, I mean, I'll, I'll copy off everything I've got and present that to the council next week.
We supposed to do that last week.
That'd be great.
Well, I just had a full weekend.
So that'll, that'll be on the agenda for next time?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Public Safety will meet on the fifteenth, I believe they meet at nine A M. at the police station. Georgia Enterprise Advocate.
Yeah, I met with the golf course last Wednesday and he's been working on that survey. And basically, some of the things that they were looking at is increasing tee times and safety signs for the, these things were brought up on the survey. And that's, and the cost of what that would be. I went through and asked each one of them on their personnel manual if they had any numbers that they felt they wanted to discuss or look at. And I did write down each one of those. We discussed the budget with each one of them and Cindy from the library offered to help with any SOPs because there were no SOPs in some of the places. We did look at a lot of the things at the airport. The airport did have their meeting on Friday and they talked a lot about the new hangar that was built out there. And they did have glider, first gliders used it this weekend, I did go out and look at that. It's pretty impressive. We have some, the new heating and air conditioning units were put in and they're operating.
How's the smell up there? Has it improved or what's the difference?
Well, that did help some, but they think there might be still an issue where it's pulling in from the sewer somewhere. They did talk about the hay crop that was done, but they had a few adjustments they wanted to work on for next season.
Did they give you a price while we got all the hay?
There's a, this is outside this wall, like...
Inside.
The hay was inside the fence.
Okay, the, excuse me, the inside. Let's see. They didn't say how much they got. The, the other thing, the FAA came and met with the mayor, Harley and Tracy. And they did discuss some things with the peatling contract. And the water line too out there has been outbuilt and it's going, supposed to be this coming week, I think they'll be working on that and getting that put back in so that it go to the tractor shed. Talked about the sign being put on the back of the new hangar rather than being, being put on the poles out in front because you can't really see it. And then you were asking about the land outside the wild life fence and there's ninety acres, I guess, of sorbanium that's planted out there. And they anticipate the cost of placing the crop list is between four thousand five hundred and five thousand five hundred. And so it doesn't have any irrigation, so they, they could either sell it or either decide to chop crop, which is what we talked about. Corn price is low, so it's three seventy-one, I guess, if they were going to use that.
It's not corn.
No, I said if they were going to do that.
But you can't base it off of corn, Trey, if it's not corn is what I'm saying.
So anyway, the crop should be able to be chopped like in mid-September and probably get between eight thousand, five hundred and nine thousand, the crop. And then they talked about grazing, there's two people that are interested in putting on compound. Hopefully do that. So if you'd like to read this, this was their report.
And there is irrigation out there, we just couldn't be probably do it.
Right, right.
So when are you going to appease us on this peatling situation, I guess?
Appease us?
I want, I want to know what they, I guess, what the FAA had to say.
They even got back to us yet.
Oh, she said you guys met with them.
I, we did. They're discussing it and deciding whether, you know, they were just kind of giving information about what peatling was trying to do.
You know, it's been over a year, I, I don't know, I'm thinking, if nothing's been done.
I think we should, uh...
Well, they're, it's in the hands of the FAA and the state DOT, Aeronautical DOT, so...
We should get a, a written statement from them when they make up their mind.
That's, that's a good idea. We, we need to have some information or we need to figure out if we're just going to dissolve this one deal.
No, the ball's in their court right now, we did, just like Georgia said, met with them last week. Until I hear back from them on their report on what's allowed, if they, if they will allow what we need, is going to do there. And until I get the go-ahead, we can't...
I know, I've been, I've been in contact with the district center.
Yep, so the ball's in their court.
I want to know what they're...
I'm probably going to have to contact them to have them contact me instead of Harley, of course, so... Can you make them for a timeframe? They're pretty, they're, they're looking at me, I mean, if I don't have somebody next week, I'd be surprised based on the timetable during the discussion.
They're doing their whole master plan, trying to figure out how this is going to play into it. And I, to me, I don't, I don't think that's the right time, I'm up for thirty-five years, that's just me, I...
I don't either.
I think it should be about ten years max.
I was going to also add they have to fly in out there this Friday night.
Thank you, yeah.
And then they're also...
This weekend, it's all weekend.
Yeah, but they fly in on Friday night, so Dennis, for three days, hopefully, you know, a lot of...
This coming weekend, not last weekend.
No, this coming weekend.
Yeah, the way you mentioned, it was last weekend, that's why I want to clarify, clarify people, I want to go out there.
You should, you should go out and watch them come in and they'll usually go out and tour the hills and different...
Yeah, they're going to fly in Friday, have a barbecue. They will be there for a while, like till ten o'clock Saturday morning. They do welcome city council and anybody from the community to come out and see what they're doing. And then they're going to tour the hills. So it's just a great community event that, if you can, support it.
And then CAP or the kids that are in the...
Civil War.
Civil Air Patrol, there you go. They were out and they got to go and they showed them how to put the gliders together and they were able to glide from out here. And it was really pretty exciting and they wanted to thank everybody for allowing us, allowing them to get their gliders stored in there. It's tough getting those together, I helped them do it. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Did you say what time the public safety was?
It's nine A M., I believe next Wednesday. Now, can you help me with that? Do you have that off the top of your head?
What?
The public safety meeting?
Public safety means nine, on the fifteenth?
Next, on the fifteenth. Thanks. Thanks.
Have you found enough citizen volunteers for that board?
I, are you talking about the police chief? Yes, I do. I, as of today, have a committee of five, which is what I wanted to get together to review what will be four applicants for police chief. So, that's...
Did we took the job out or was...
Police chief is actually an appointment.
That's true.
I, I thought we were going to have some citizens on the committee.
There are two council members and there are three citizens from...
And you have filed in three citizens?
Yes, I have. I have a, I have a committee of five. Um, I will be getting the fourth applicant's resume on Thursday. He was going to bring it by today and I asked him to wait. Um, which he, of course, um, Deanne and Craig volunteered first and I didn't have a problem with that, so, um...
I guess I want to clarify that, though if you put it out, you still can appoint. If you put the job out on the listing, you could still appoint from that.
Yes. Um, I prefer not to put it out. If that is something you guys are opposed to, we can talk about it, but, um, I have four applicants and, um, I don't have a problem with any of the four, so unless someone in, on the council does, I wasn't planning to put it out for an application.
Are we going to deprive you of who the four are?
Yes.
It's going to come to the council.
I don't know.
Craig and Deanne will know for sure. Um, yes, I'm going to wait to see if the fourth person does, um, continue to throw his hat into the ring and then I will let the council know on Monday night, in our meeting on Monday night, if that's okay. I'm open to other suggestions. Kurt, do you have a problem with that?
You're talking about hiring a police chief? Has your police chief resigned?
Our police chief is running for sheriff.
Yeah, I know.
And...
That doesn't take place until November.
Correct. I have, I'm allowing the committee two months to review resumes and we will interview all four and then we will probably have, you know, maybe the top two or whatever come back for a second interview, but I would like to give these volunteers the two, full two months to make their decision from a hopefully unbiased and, um, you know, data-driven decision.
So, are you advocating that, uh, since the police chief is running for sheriff, that he not be allowed to stay as police chief if he does not win the election?
He has chosen to do something else at that point, um, and I am respecting that. Justin Hayne, who is the current police captain, has told me that he would prefer not to have that position and therefore open it up to...
So, just to be clear, regardless of the outcome of the election, you will have a new police chief?
That is correct. And, and Chief Evans is aware of that, so...
I hope so.
Yes.
He's, he's not going to hear this through the rumor mill. We have had a discussion. He's ready for a change in his life. Um, he, of course, is hoping to become the next sheriff, but if he does not, he understands that, um, you know, we're not necessarily closing the door on opportunities, but, um, we are looking for a new police chief. And I have three for sure, um, probably four. Like I said, the gentleman did come forward today and I asked him to wait till Thursday to have a discussion with me, just given what's happened at City Hall. So, um, going to the next item, Debbie, I'm going to ask you if there's anything you would like to discuss in, on the finance officer report.
When's the enterprise meeting?
There's, yeah, it's the last Wednesday of the month and it has been, it's been at each one of the locations, so, um, it's on our calendar there at City Hall. Nine o'clock is at the golf course, nine, yeah. And eleven is at the, um, Miller Center in North, uh, four is at the library and the airport's on Friday at eight.
About the four.
And plus the Miller Center, both that, eleven.
For my report, I did hear from, um, Rod Torqueton, who is the state legislative auditor, and he has accepted our twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve annual reports. I have contacted, um, Kettle Forstensen to continue with our twenty-thirteen audit and to finalize that, get that off our plates. And, um, I have not received a call back yet, but they did do the pre-audit and I think, um, instead of working with some other, um, company, I'm going to continue with them unless anyone has an issue with that, but to, you know, to get our twenty-thirteen financial house in order.
Nice question, but...
Sure.
I've been told that before they start an audit, that the auditor will sit down with us and go everything at the beginning.
An entry and exit. An entry and exit?
Yes, and so I would request that.
And, and, okay. Thank you. And when they call me back, which I'm assuming will be tomorrow, I called rather late in the day, it was, you know, almost five, I believe, um, I will request that and, um, let you all know the process. Hopefully, I'll have a good process for you by Monday night for that, but that is my plan. I also wanted to let you know that we are going to try to have a memorial for Mr. Lux. Um, it was proposed to do that Friday evening. The family requested that after the funeral, which is at ten A M. at Kirk Funeral Home in Rapid City at ten A M. on Friday. They're having the burial in Lead at two, and then they had requested that we do the memorial service here that evening, however, that is the evening of the wine, walk and putt. Therefore, I have no one from, you know, the chamber to support, you know, an activity here. So, that doesn't appear to be a good night for the city to do that. However, you know, we do want to, you know, have a memorial and if any of you want to contribute to flowers or anything else for the memorial, um, Debbie or Mary can take donations for that. Um, so I will let you all know when the memorial is or if anybody from the community would like to contribute to flowers to the family. But I don't have any additional information. I did not hear back from his wife, um, changing it from Friday night to some other time. So, um, difficult day at City Hall. We're going to keep Harley's office closed until his wife asks that, um, she be allowed to go through for any personal effects prior to, you know, us getting in there and doing anything. Um, I am going to ask her to do that Monday morning. Like I said, the Friday, the funeral is Friday, so I don't want to ask her to do that this week. Um, and then Carol Bowles and myself, between two and four on Monday afternoon, we'll go through Harley's office and address anything that we need to get moving forward at that time.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.